Order. Thank you, Sherry.
You're welcome.
Continue. As I was saying, I'll call the meeting to order. Let the record show all three commissioners are present. We will start first with our opening pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the business agenda as presented.
Second, can I have a motion, a second of the business agenda? Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We have no meeting minutes at this time, which brings us to citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board of commissioners on any topic that is not on the agenda later. Please limit your comments to seven minutes or less. If you wish to address the board, please unmute yourself, raise your hand, get our attention, give us your name and what community you're from, and we will recognize you. Not is.
Hannah just joined.
We are in citizen comment right now. What's that?
Seven two one one.
Seven two one one.
Good afternoon, Greg Wagner, Goldendale, a member of CEES. Ms. Casado, over the last five months, CEES members have sent many documents to you and the other commissioners from agencies like OSHA, FEMA, National Fire Protection Association, and others with information concerning the dangers of lithium ion batteries. Ralph Harvey testified to working at Google in the Dallas and observed firsthand a man being injured by lithium ion battery fire and explosion. There have been many cases of people being injured and killed by these batteries. Lithium ion batteries have caught fire in phones, computers, cars, and Boeing airplanes. How can you state that batteries pose no danger to the citizens? What specialized training do you have or have you received that makes you a lithium ion battery expert? If you don't have this specialized training, then your decision that batteries aren't dangerous to the citizens is unfounded and the moratorium should stand. You must have not read all the documents CEES members have sent you regarding batteries. If batteries do not catch fire and explode, why is every battery building required to have a fire suppression system in it? That alone proves that these batteries do catch fire. You have ignored all this information. You have intentionally done so so you could rescind the moratorium and allow all the solar projects to continue. There is a danger to the citizens and you don't have the authority to make the final decision. The county attorney told you to create solar ordinances and you ignored him. You've stated many times, let me make this clear, I am in favor of wind and solar. This indicates that you have a preform point of view. You are not open minded and cannot render a fair and impartial decision. You have violated the appearance of fairness doctrine and ordinance oh zero three three zero two one. The solar moratorium should remain enacted. I am challenging you, Mr. Sodder. You should disqualify yourself from any future discussions or decision making concerning industrial scale solar projects in our county.
Thank you for your comments. We are still in citizen comment. If you wish to make a comment, please unmute or raise your hand. I'm not seeing anybody.
Hi, this is Hannah Brows, the WSU Extension Director.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I am trying to make a hire and it sounds like I would like to be the one to be able to present to you some rationale for why I would like to see a step increase. And I wasn't sure what the best way to go about that might be. I'm not sure if that might be making an appointment, opportunity to meet together at the next Board of County Commissioner meeting on Tuesday, or if you'd like to hear from me now or at another time. Just looking to the board to get some direction about what, how you'd like for me to present.
Sure, Hannah, I think, and I'll look to my seatmates, make sure I'm got this right. I think what we were hoping is maybe probably the most effective would be an in person and we're happy to move our schedule, you know, to make some time. Next Tuesday would be fine if that will work for you. And then we can just sit down and because I think, I think it's hard through intermediary sometimes and, you know, we do Zoom, but I'm still a firm believer in, in face to face if that option is available.
I completely agree. I, of course, as the person who is trying to make the hire, who's done the interviewing, I would like to be the one to share with you my rationale for, for my request. Should I work with Lee to find a time? Is that, would that be the best strategy?
Yes, I think that would be.
Okay, I'll send, I'll send Lee a message. Thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing you all in person next Tuesday.
Okay, thanks, Erin. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. So, folks, you know how this works. Unmute yourself. Raise your hand, get our attention.
Star six if you're on your phone.
Star six, that's right, if you're on your phone to unmute.
I would imagine everybody's figured that out by now.
You never know, somebody might be new to Zoom, this might be their first time. See nothing. I'm not seeing anything. Okay. We are still open.
Like to thank the board for your comments for that evaluation. That's the quickest turnaround we've had ever.
I thought that, I thought, who's in there? We just did that this morning, that's good.
I was actually on the wall for once. Not really, I just.
I just got it done.
Nice.
Okay, in case someone has just joined us, we are in citizen comment period. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment to the board. If you wish to speak to the board, please unmute yourself, raise your hand, star six if you're, to unmute yourself. Count to twenty-two.
Good afternoon, commissioners, are you still taking community comments?
Yes, we are. Please give us your name and your community for the record and go ahead.
This is Sherry Vasquez from Houston. And I would like to continue the conversation regarding the county, QuikTack County's CIPA environmental checklist process as well as the conditional use permit process that the commissioners continue to tell the citizens to trust in the process. And as you know, I am in Houston, as I stated, and currently residents in Houston are appealing a CIPA determination, mitigated determination of non-significance for the under canvas project. So I am in the middle of. Yeah, I can't, can you still hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, Sherry.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I would like to address when I'm listening to you commissioners speak about the CIPA environmental checklist process. And I am not certain at this point if the commissioners are misinformed or if the commissioners are misinforming the constituents of QuikTack County. Because, and I hope it's not the latter, because I am investigating the under canvas and CIPA determination of non-significance. And as I have moved throughout departments, specifically Department of Ecology, asking questions why certain environmental areas are not being evaluated, such as the water use, such as air quality with 98 wood burning stoves, such as our shorelines that should be protected on the national wild and scenic White Salmon River. There is no submission of any water plan, which they are, this, this development is regulated to an under 5,000 use. No water plan has been submitted, no annulus, no comparison water plan has been submitted. And let me see, all these issues with this project, and I keep asking, when will these issues be looked at? And I am told by the Central Washington Director Sage Park of Department of Ecology that these environmental impacts, and considering them, if they will have an impact, will not be looked at until after the CIPA is approved. So to tell our citizens of QuikTack County that the process of the CIPA checklist is to look at these potential environmental impacts is false information. And if you disagree with me, then you need to speak to your county planner and you ask her, when will this stuff be looked at? When will the water use be looked at? When will the septic system dumping thousands of gallons of water on a hillside into the White Salmon River be looked at? And I am told after the CIPA is approved, not part of the process, after. And then if we're lucky, maybe the county will put some conditions on the conditional use permit that regulates these issues that everybody already knows are going to be an issue. That's why this development needs a conditional use permit. But again, I want to go back to let the citizens know that when you tell them that our air quality is looked at, this environmental thing is looked at, this is looked at in the CIPA, that is false information and I challenge you to prove me wrong. According to the Department of Ecology, this is not looked at, our, our county planner is not going to look at this until after. Nobody will even look at this. It won't even be looked at. It'll be put in a conditional use permit that this development should do these things. This should happen. And then there's no checks and balances, there'll be no water flow meter on their water. Nobody will know how much water they're pulling from the ground. There's no checks and balances on looking at the CIPA. So I am really offended when I hear you tell your citizens that this environmental impacts are looked at in a CIPA process. Because until you can prove to me that they are looked at before and during the process of looking at these environmental impacts, then I'll believe it. But right now, on the under canvas, there is a lot of things missing. Let's just talk about the evacuation plan. This should be an insult to every citizen and to the commissioners. This development submitted an evacuation plan for its CIPA checklist for Glacier, Montana, not for Oak Ridge Road, not for your local citizens that life is at risk. And that road, you're not getting hundreds of people down it. And so to tell us this stuff is looked at at CIPA, that is misinformation. Because apparently the development doesn't even need to submit an evacuation plan for this, for the development up there. So that is offensive and stop telling the citizens that it's looked at because it's not. And that's what I'm putting this on record because you asked the citizens to trust in the CIPA process. You asked the citizens to trust in the process. Well, if there's no CIPA process, then who's even making any conditions? And why do, and to say that I said that a conditional use permit is for prohibited jobs or developments, that's not what I said. I said for conditional uses are used for developments that are probably not zoned for their, or whatever rules and regulations and ordinances. Something special has to be given to that development because something isn't right. So we need to be honest about what is that in a CIPA, what isn't looked at in a CIPA, and start being honest with your citizens and stop misleading them. Because I'm in the middle of it and I've gone up the chain. And I've talked to Department of Ecology, he's supposed to overlook this, and they say you don't. They don't. So start being honest with your citizens. And I just hope that these night road people aren't going to get their cup handed to them like we're getting our cup handed to us for under canvas. And by the way, our county hasn't charged that project, any money yet, all the county time has been taxpayer paid for this multimillion dollar resort to be forced upon us. It's going to be dangerous. So stop telling us that you look at this because you don't. So have a good day.
Thank you for your comments. We are still in citizen comment. Please unmute yourself, raise your hand, get our attention.
One of them you signed, one of them doesn't have a sign.
Definitely needs, we wait till we actually take action, but.
Okay, if I haven't used my seven minutes, this is Sherry Vasquez. Can I continue since nobody else is speaking?
Erin, you, you have, you reserved one minute of time. Go ahead.
Okay, can you answer me, when will our county look at the evacuation plan for under canvas? And will, when will the county tell us citizens how much water a 95 unit resort with laundry and a restaurant and a luxury spa will need? When will the county look at this? Can the commissioners tell me that? When will you look at the sewage that will come from their, their development? Can you tell me when this will be looked at?
I will say for me, the only thing I'm comfortable telling you is that the water use, they, per their application in Department of Ecology rules, they are restricted to 5,000 gallons. They are using exempt well water right. So their, whatever plan they develop is they must keep their usage to 5,000 gallons or less, or they would have to have a water right that would be associated with it. And so any plan, otherwise it's no. You can't use 5,000 gallons.
Can you tell me who will be, will you tell me who will be monitoring their water use? How that will look? Am I muted?
No, it's, no, you're not muted. I don't know, we have, we have thousands of permit exempt wells that folks are using.
I, yeah, I know, I don't want to get sidetracked on regular folks with regular wells. This is a reward.
Damn. Their water right exemption, their exemption is that exact same exemption. It's a 5,000 gallon exemption, just like anybody else. The plan that they have submitted is they have to standardize, they have to somehow credibly show that they're under 5,000 gallon, that will, that would certainly be a condition of Department of Ecology approval.
It's Department of Health. It's Department of Health, and I've spoke to Department of Health. They have not submitted a water system plan yet.
Right.
There is not one being submitted. So who's going to monitor their well use?
Just like anything else, it will be a condition of their approval. If they are not, if they are not doing that, then their, their permit is withdrawn.
And so that, you can guarantee me right now that that will be a condition that they have a flow meter put on their well?
No, I cannot guarantee that, just like I'm saying, any permit exempt well in the state of Washington is limited to 5,000 gallons, whether, for whatever reason. Now, there may be that a condition is that maybe they do put that on there where it has to be metered. I don't know, that will not be, but there, that is not, that is not a requirement in this state right now.
Okay, so that just proves my point. None of this is looked at until everything is approved and they start building. Or they start going for their building after the CIPA has been approved and the conditional use has been approved. So I am requesting that in that conditional use as a citizen, that a flow meter be put on their well. So at least us citizens know they're staying under it. If the county doesn't care, we care, we have orchards, we have existing wells up there with residents.
Ms. Vasquez, may I, may I advise you that the Board of County Commissioners is not the appropriate one? And Dave correctly stated that he can't promise you something because it's not coming before us. There's going to be a hearing, a public hearing in front of the hearings examiner. I hope that during that public hearing, you ask the hearings examiner to set a condition of use that the well would have a meter on it. That is the appropriate way to handle this. That is how the process works. You need to tell the hearings examiner what you would like to see, okay?
Okay, we are still in citizen comment.
Did they mute me?
I didn't get that. No, you're not muted, but you are out of time, Ms. Vasquez. So this is an opportunity for citizens to address the board of commissioners. Please unmute yourself, raise your hand.
I got a question.
Yes?
Um, Denise Lee, 111 Bowman Ridge Road.
Can you come, come forward? Do this officially, so they can hear you, so it gets in the record. You're okay.
Anywhere.
I just noticed the other day, I noticed a senior citizen, the Mount Adams Bus Stop across from the planning department. I noticed an elderly lady having a hard time making it to the stop and no place to sit. And I'm assuming that when we have something final, that we're going to be able to maybe provide a binge or something for some of these folks to wait for the bus?
Yeah, I'm trying to think, yeah, and the new, when we get moved over to the new building.
Okay, so is that where the bus?
The bus stop will be over here. It was over here, but then when they got moved, when seniors got moved over, they moved the bus stop to.
Just didn't have, yeah, that's something.
Yeah, that is, but we should see about getting a.
A temporary. The hard part is something that, yeah, that can't be stolen on a Friday night. So it has to be bolted down.
She's actually the first person I've ever known that's there, but I know her, I know her.
Okay. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. Unmute yourself, raise your hand, if you're in the Zoom format. Star six on the phone. Erin.
Hi, how are you?
Good. You're still in citizen comment, if you wish to avail yourself.
No, I'm good, but I appreciate.
Citizen Quinn.
I'll wait till 1:30 and see myself.
Okay. Yes. I see she's on here.
Oh.
She popped in a bit ago. Wasn't that a show, Dr. Quinn? Yes, it was.
Wasn't that a show, it was like 30 years before your time, sir.
Yeah. Growing up. Yep, we watched it on the movie picture shows. Well, sometimes.
Back in his day, they just played with puppets.
Yeah, they did. With shadow.
They were shadow puppeters.
You know, have the repeater on top of your. Exactly. Got a bit of color, right? And I think that was a CBS show and that was like our strongest station. It was usually mostly color. All right. This is not trip down memory lane time, it is citizen comment time. So if there's anybody wishing to speak to the board that hasn't already addressed them during this period, this is your opportunity.
Dave, the treasurer will not have a presentation today. Things that.
Yeah, Finance Committee.
Yeah.
Meet Friday.
Sharon, incentive agenda number 10, your health department data analysis thing, is there a budget impact to that or none at all?
No.
Just a relationship forming.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's a nonprofit group.
That's what I kind of got from it, but I wasn't 100% sure. So since you're standing here, I figured I would answer my question. Or sitting here.
It's going to save a lot of my time, actually.
Time and mental capacity. Which that's priceless. Hi Larry. We're still in citizen comment. I'm looking for comments, so, you know, for a couple more minutes. So last call on the Zoom or phone. You can give a citizen comment. No, I'm going to get up and go around, no. I don't think that would be wise. Okay, the time being 1:30, time we set aside for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Our first order of business is a public hearing to discuss the final project performance review for the Washington Gorge Action Programs funded by the Community Development Block Grant. And I believe we have Leslie Naromore, Executive Director for WAGAP is, I see, I see your face. So if you want to unmute yourself, are you going to be leading this or is Director quit? No, I'm, I'm she, she's indicating that you are leading this. So, uh, take it away, Ms. Naromore.
Thank you, and I will keep it very brief because it wasn't that long ago that I came before you all to give you another CDBG update. So I hope that you remember that one. So CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant is one of the foundational grants that WAGAP uses to increase capacity across all of our programs. I think most notably it's used in our food banks, our housing programs and our youth center here in White Salmon, um, which I'm sure you are all familiar with. Childcare in our county and that we have an issue and are kind of in a state of emergency regarding childcare. So I thought I would make sure to mention that that is one of the ways that this grant does help address that issue. In 2020, WAGAP served 8,572 clients from 4,006 households. I think that in the next year, we will continue to see numbers on about that same par as people are coming out of the pandemic. I know people are, are being able to start to get back to work, but still needing a lot of support after a year of struggling. So we are still here to serve them and to help them as they move forward. Are there any questions regarding anything around the CDBG grant?
Questions? No? Questions, Erin? No. She's shaking her head. Actually, I guess you can see her too. So, no, uh, only question I would have is the, you know, the next grant round is there, was there any, is, was it maintenance funding or was it additional? Did you get additional resources?
The next grant round is just our normal amount that we would normally receive from year to year.
Okay.
And I believe this year, Erin, I don't have the number right in front of me. I believe it's around 70,000, 3,000 of which is kept by the county for administrative purposes.
Yeah, I think it's 70,2,411-ish.
You think? That's a pretty, uh, that's a pretty accurate guess. So I'll go with that. Okay. I would say that's a little disappointing. I was, I would have hoped that they would have maybe increased that, grant award a little bit, but.
I do think there's a possibility that they might, um, a lot of our grants, you know, at the beginning of the contract, we've received the normal amount and then we have amendments that come through. So it's possible that we might see an amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. I think that, I think we have met the requirements of the grant. So you've given us the kind of closeout as far as on the previous one. If there's no other questions, then you folks can all get back to your jobs, I guess.
Thank you, and thank you to Erin for helping me through this process.
All right, see you later, Erin. Hi, Leslie. Okay, next is a public meeting to consider approval of short plat SPL 2019 dash oh eight parcel number to be read by the, uh, by the planner in the High Prairie vicinity. The applicant also will be read by the planner.
Okay, this is the planner. Short plat SPL 2019 oh eight is a proposal to create two lots from parcel 03 dash 14 dash 2206 dash 2702 slash 00. It's located in the High Prairie vicinity. The administrative review of this short plat has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road health, planning and treasurer's office. All conditions of preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this short plat, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL 2019 oh eight applicant Renee Kryngbrink.
Any questions? Any questions? Okay, I would, I'm, I'm fine.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to approve short plat SPL 2019 dash 08 parcel number 03 dash 14 dash 2206 dash 2702 forward slash 00 within the High Prairie vicinity, the applicant of Renee Kryngbrink.
I will second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, uh, to approve the short plat. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Aye, motion passed. Okay, next up is a department update report. Adult probation juvenile court administrator Larry Barker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Larry.
A long time.
It has been a long time.
Goodness. I don't have much else to report, anything new, but for the sake of our two new commissioners, I run both the adult probation department and the juvenile department and have for, I don't know, four, four, five years somewhere like that.
It just seems like 20.
It does seem like 20. Retirement is getting closer to 80. So at this point, um, during the pandemic, we really didn't see a lot of, uh, difference. We, we did see some in the juvenile department. There were cases that just simply weren't filed by the prosecutor. And so our case numbers went down in the juvenile department. Not a lot, but a little. Uh, our case numbers pretty much stayed the same in the adult probation departments. We're running about 300 to 320, depending on the week, of people in the adult probation apartment. We're running about 20 to 25 in the juvenile department, which is pretty normal. It's, uh, it's very normal to have much fewer in the juvenile department than the adult department. The juvenile department, uh, clientele take a lot of work. So there's many, many hours that are put into those individuals that I would love to put in the adult probation side, but we, we don't have the time, but we have a, uh, an excellent recidivism rate in the adult probation department. So whatever we're doing seems to be working. I believe we've got the lowest in the state. So in our drug court, our drug court recidivism rate is four and a half percent. Across the state, it's 20 to 30% that come back after they've completed. Our regular, uh, probation department is running about 10% of the people who go through our system come back and reoffend again. And again, many probation departments think if they've got 50%, they're doing a really good job. So I don't know what we're doing differently, other than it's a philosophy that I've had ever since I've done probation work for the last 30 years, and that's to build relationships with these people. So you build a relationship with them and, you know, we, it's a small town. So we bump into them in the grocery store or gas station, wherever we go. And it's not uncommon for someone to be screaming my name across the store, Larry, come and meet my family.
Oh, that's not how I thought that was gonna go.
Yeah, I know. I wouldn't have either, but that's how it works. So everything else used to be running about the same. We're getting our juvenile caseloads going up now that they're filing. So we've got several new kids on, on caseload right now. I'm getting very rebellious response from my staff about signing the document about wearing a mask. They're claiming, and I kind of think so too, it's violation of their, uh, HIPAA rights. HIPAA says that you, your personal medical information is private. One of them, when I had asked about it, quickly responded, well, are you circumcised?
That's a good answer.
Well, it took me back, but their point was that they didn't feel like they were, that they needed to, to reveal personal protected information. So according to the documents, they'll have to keep, continue to wear masks because they can't sign the document or won't sign it. This says that they've gotten the vaccination. So I know of a couple that have gotten the vaccination, but just refused to sign.
So I, I have for, for their knowledge, I have the same exact concerns they do. But as an employer, I'm, I'd have to abide by L and I, or I get to spend all the taxpayers' monies on fines. So that's an argument for the state court.
Yes.
And I just, I might have.
I know, I know.
So you can, you can relay that message to them.
I will, and I have basically, that it's not your fault that this is happening. This isn't your fault.
Letting it have consequences, and it wasn't ours.
Yes, exactly. So, um, but that's, that's about it. Everybody seems to be doing fine. This is pretty much as usual. We, I've got a new person in the juvenile department, Sam Council left a few months ago, and, uh, we hired a fellow from the jail, Tim. Oh my goodness, I just.
Current.
Current, yeah. I wanted to put a Mac in front of that.
I came down and helped you do your presentation.
Thank you. He's doing an awesome job, absolutely awesome job.
He was a good hire for you.
Yeah, he really was. He's going out there and finding kids that aren't going to school or aren't doing school online and making a lot of personal contacts and we're getting kids back into the system. He was a great hire. We really enjoy it. So, uh, that's about all I have to present. Any questions?
I do. Um, what is your juvenile incarceration cost this year with COVID? And are they equally what you budgeted for incarceration costs?
Well, we, we have contract every year, which should be cutting, we should be getting a copy of it here sometime in June. That's usually when it comes out. So we have a contract that allows us 365 days. So, and it's $185 a day. Um, and then if we overuse that, then, no, I think it's $165 a day. That's what it is.
That's a contract.
Yeah. Then it's $185.
If we go, once we go over the right thing, the overage premium.
But you're not looking, you, you haven't had a big bump so far this year with COVID in the closed courts and anything like that to make you think there's a worry there.
No, uh-uh. We did last year, but it wasn't because, maybe it was kind of because of COVID, but, um, because they quit having trials. So we had to house a bunch of kids for a while. It was a horrible experience. But this year, no.
Okay.
No, everything seems to be going fine. Uh, we're on track. And so I, I don't expect to have to hit the $185 a day rate, but we budgeted for it.
That was my only question, comment.
How regularly do we go past the, the 185 or to the 185, the 365 overnight?
Not, usually not. Uh, last year was an anomaly. Prior to that, since I've been on board, we've been able to stay under the, under the budgeted amount and, uh, so we've done quite well, I believe. But then again, it's not in our hands. It's not in our control. It's with the judge orders. And so we must comply with that. So, but it, we're doing fine now. And, and normally we're within budget. So it's usually not a problem. Last year, horrible problem.
Just a curiosity question. Do they do ankle monitors for juveniles or only adults?
Oh no, we do both. Yep. Yep. The kids are more prone to cut them off and take off. The whole time I've been doing ju- uh, adult work, which is, I don't know, this is 30 years now, I've had one individual cut his ankle monitor off out of all that time. Juveniles, we've had four or five just since I've been on board, but they usually just will cut them off and leave them in their room. The adults will tend to cut them off. Well, the one that I had cut it off down at Biggs Junction and threw it out in fields. We never did find it. But the kids just tend to just cut them off at home and take off. And then we go looking for them. We find them, put them back on, try to get the judge to put them in jail for a little while instead of running free. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't.
How, how's staff doing as far as the cross training? You know, as far as I know, there was some, you know, helping going on between juvenile and adult.
Correct.
Staff. I, I would anticipate that is continuing to go on.
It is continuing to go on. Um, I realized that my tenure is going to end here someday. So I'm trying to, to, uh, separate that out a little bit so that the, the juvenile staff don't do as much in the adult probation department as they have in the past. But someday I'd like to be able to keep them completely separate and that'll be kind of my science time to retire. At that point, we'll, board will have to figure out, because we'll, you know, the intent was that this was a temporary thing, that I would run both departments. And eventually I would, would retire and, and then we'd have to go back to a director of adult and a director in the juvenile. But the, the crossing.
When did that join?
Four, five years.
Four, five years?
Yeah.
When Keith Anderson retired.
2015, I think, right?
Yeah, that's about right. 2015.
Sounds about right, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Barker or? All right. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Enjoy the rest of your day.
I think I would enjoy it in here. It's too hot out there.
It's hot enough in here. I got my little fan going.
One of those two. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Actually, I do have one more question for you before you head out the door. You don't have to sit. You mentioned that eventually you're going to retire. Are you working on staff to bring somebody up to speed to hopefully take over for you?
I am. Oh, yes. Yeah.
Cause I'm, I'm kind of this cross training guy, so I, I don't like headhunting if I don't have to. Good enough.
Nope, I am definitely doing that.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
We're running a little ahead of schedule. We can hop down and take care of some of the business if we want. Consent, your penis bill.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with all 10 items.
I would second the motion.
Okay, I got a motion a second on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Other than the radios are the, the real number now. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept, uh, in pay, pay estimate number one to Tri Valley Construction Incorporated in the amount of $5,300, including seven and a half percent sales tax and the amount of $397.50 for the payment amount of $5,697.50 for the waste removal of Hicks House.
Second to motion.
Okay, I have a motion a second on pay estimate number one to Tri Valley Construction. Any further discussion on that? It's actually not a bad.
No, that was a really happy number for me.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Yeah, I would have charged more.
Yeah.
I'm gonna shoot you like. In my day, I would have.
Well, I would think. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the accounts payable warranty in the amount of 179,522 dollars, or sorry, $552.99. So 179,552 dot 99 and payroll benefits and, and the amount of $0 ending June 1st, 2021.
Second to motion.
Okay, I got a motion a second on the EP. Any discussion on that? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Who paid the bills?
On these days, I'm just gonna sign the jury for you. I did not have to push the paper.
I take that. My oath of office very seriously.
I know, I wouldn't do it either. I know, I would do it.
Well, we're running a little ahead. You can get set up if you want. I mean, your, yeah, your partner, president. Your, your eminence, his eminence. I don't either. I have some recollection of being in DC on our thing and being like a baby commissioner and I was, we were, I was, you know, going to be in a supporting role having a discussion with, you know, Congress, maybe whoever. And something happened and I did not hear it. I was it. And it was like, oh God, I have to be by myself. I've never done this.
That would be.
It was. I got caught in security or something and I was, I was so nervous. I was early. So I was, I was in there first and they're very, you know, you get your 10 minutes.
Yeah.
It's like, begin. Okay. That was the first time. Now.
Now you'll get hung up.
Yeah, that is kind of what I do now. Some other baby commissioner. Some other baby commissioner.
I did suggest that maybe we didn't follow better.
Oh.
Fill that time while he's waiting.
Oh, sorry. Okay, well, well.
Sorry, you have to shove Eric's stuff off the table.
Oh, me? I just thought I'd come over because you look like you're early.
We were.
Okay.
Thank you for noticing. I did send you a message.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
I was probably on my way here. Make my sink light.
Yeah, they do. Jacob in the hall, I'm gonna go with it.
After the question just running in my head.
Oh.
Thoughts in my brain, so.
Yeah, just slide this stuff out. Take one of those with you.
Over here. Take one for the room. There we go. Now I'll be educated. Looking better after lunch than it was this morning.
Oh, yeah, it hasn't.
Yeah, so far. Can I shove me aside? If we need to, and I'll just wait.
We'll take you first. If I had been on the ball, I would have figured that out.
That paper that you signed earlier, and she's here, I might as well have her sign.
Oh, yeah. I stuck it.
It's probably in that one.
Well, these are all, yeah, I think it is. I bet it's in the voucher.
Everybody already seen this?
Yes, I think that everything is ready.
Cool.
Oh.
And I'll just step back.
I got relegated.
You got bumped, sorry. That's all right. I see him just going in the restroom, so.
More for you. You can take these away, I think, so you just have the bigger picture.
I'm gonna take Lynn first. You were, somebody was late or not. Late being early.
Still being early.
Was still.
You just want to make him wait.
I know.
Go ahead, Lynn. Let's continue our conversation.
Okay. Um, a couple of questions that were asked earlier was how many new complaints? 21. So I did a breakdown of the types of the ones that have come in. Five that we assigned numbers to for health that were septic related and one that I still have to assign to health. But they said I needed.